Welcome to the January 9th, 2024 meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners, and it is cold and snowy outside. So I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
I'd ask that you please join me by standing with a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Means there is no one from the public here, I assume we won't need to have that portion of our meeting. We'll move to the consent agenda, and today's consent agenda consists of approval of tax roll adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of the public forum, Lincoln County Sheriff's Office memorandum of understanding, approval of county commission minutes for December 19th, and approval of the county commission minutes for January the 2nd of 2024. Are there any items that commissioners wish to withdraw? If not, I would take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve today's consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we'll move right into our action items. Item number one.
Use squad purchase with Chief Scott Apker with Rural Fire District Number Three.
Good morning, Chief Apker.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners.
Good morning.
Fire District Five took possession of their new squad on January the 1st, and that replaces a 1999 Ford F-450 squad that was in their fleet. Our board met on December the 18th and talked about this truck and voted to see if we could buy that. We negotiated with District Five for a purchase price of $37,000. $35,000 is for the truck, and they left the 800 mobile radio in the truck for us for another $2,000. Those radios are almost $5,000 apiece, so we felt like that was a good deal. And so we would like to see if we can go ahead and purchase that truck. We plan to use special equipment funds to do that, and so we have 121,159 in there, and 184,159 will be what we have when we're done. And we intend to put this truck in service and make a few modifications to kind of fit our needs a little bit better, and we think it'll be a good addition to our fleet.
Questions from commissioners or comments?
One question, Chief. This isn't replacing, this is just an addition to your fleet.
This is an addition. We hope that as we are able to build a new station in Brookville or something, we can add another squad truck over there. We see multiple times where we wind up mutually laid. Sometimes that's because of people or firefighters, and sometimes that's because we don't have enough equipment there on the scene to do what we need to do, so adding another squad we feel like would be an added benefit for us.
Does District Number Three have more than one site for a station?
We have four sites, yes.
Four sites, okay.
Yes. The Headville Station, which is north of Sun Natter West, or what was Sun Natter West, the Bavaria Station, Brookville, and then Glendale.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware of the Bavaria one for sure.
Yeah, there's 11. We have 11 pieces of apparatus already, so this will make 12, but...
And how many total of volunteers?
We carry about 47 on the roster.
Wow.
And in that number, you know, we don't get all of them, obviously, at every call, but when something bad is happening, when it's a very big fire, we wind up with a good portion of those people coming to help. But, yeah, we have a very strong core of people that I would guess is probably around 20 or 25 firefighters that are very active and regular, and the rest, I guess I would consider them more reserves, and they only come out when it's bad sometimes or when they're available. That's the nature of volunteer firefighting. They can only come when they're available in the first place, so we take what we can get when we can get it.
Well, thank you, and to your dedicated volunteers for doing that service for the communities, it's pretty important.
Thank you.
So, any other comments?
No.
I'd ask for public comment, but like I said, nobody from the public is here, so I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve RFA 2024-08 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2024-08. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item number two.
Change order for Barn One and Two Electrical with Hannah Bett, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, commissioners. So back on September 19th, your commission awarded a bid to DRCL Electric in the amount of $54,550 to complete the necessary work that was associated with exterior electric for barns One and Two in conjunction with the new siding that is going on those barns. During the process and in further consultation with Evergy, because of the transformer size, the planned pole-mounted transfer needs to be changed to a ground-mounted transformer. So this particular request and change consists of removing and replacing concrete from the alley to Barn One, installing underground conduits, and installing bollards around the ground-level transformer for protection. This change order also does credit the project to delete things that were previously needed but now not needed because of the requested change. So in total, the amount requested for this change order is an additional $5,678 to the project. The budget impact piece of this, this added cost will be funded from roughly $224,000. It's earmarked in CIP for this particular project, as well as planned, other planned projects in the CIP for livestock index over the 2024 year.
Questions or comments?
I have a question. Is this concrete that needs to be replaced and removed and replaced, is that new concrete that we have poured?
No, no. This is concrete that we were going to replace anyways, so it's kind of, it's kind of nice to be able to do this. It's more in the alleyway between the barns.
And how many poles would this eliminate?
Just one.
Well, I like the idea of getting the poles gone. I like the underground, and I'm glad that this isn't going back on some of our work that we've already done, and so thank you.
Roger, anything?
Nope.
How about our online commissioners? Are you still alive, still there?
Still here, no, thank you.
Okay.
I'm still in sunny Dominican Republic, so...
That is not funny.
That's...
Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chair, I suggest we approve RFA 2024-07 as presented.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2024-07. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. We will move to informational items. Item number one.
Road and Bridge Bimonthly Update with Darren Fisher, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning, commissioners. This is our bimonthly update for November and December of 2023. I would like to give a little bit of accolades to our employees. As of December, or January 1 of this year, they have completed seven years with no lost time accidents, so that doesn't mean we haven't had any accidents, but we haven't had any accidents that required an employee to miss work. We had two LTAP training classes at our facilities. We had two snow and ice control events, and that would be three if you included today. We did some trash pickups countywide. We replaced or repaired 12 different culverts. This is, okay, this is a cloud and link. There was an entrance culvert there to a cattle pen. Next slide, please. This is Old Forty, east of Ohio Street. This is actually at the Earth Care Services out there, business on Old Forty. Next slide, please. This is Hobbs Creek, west of Gibson Valley. We removed that concrete head wall and put a little extension on there, and then we dug the ditch out later. Next slide, please. This is U Street in Kip, Kansas. After we had gotten done paving there in U Street, I'd gotten a call about this culvert just south of that intersection, so we replaced it. This is a collapsed culvert on Lapsley Road, west of Gibson Valley. Felt the need to replace it also. Next slide, please. This is Salmsburg, west of Centennial. This one's obviously collapsed. We were able to catch this before somebody did some serious damage to their vehicle. Next slide, please. This is McReynold Road, east of Simpson Road. This is where we had done some road rebuild, and a gentleman by the name of Mike Jensen came in and asked the commissioners about a culvert, so we went in and installed one out there. Next slide, please. This is some of the grading work we did on U Street prior to the paving. There were some soft spots. We put GeoGrid in to solid up the foundation and the base. Next slide, please. This is just the completed grade work. Next slide, please. These two are pictures looking from the north and from the south. After the pavement had been placed, we went in and put a rock edge wedge up next to the pavement. Next slide, please. This is some ditch cleaning on Mariposa, east of Cunningham. Next slide, please. This is also some ditch cleaning, but on Hopkins Road, east of Lapsley Road. Next slide, please. We also started our bridge inspection repairs. Every two years, engineering is required to inspect all of the bridges in Saline County, and when they get done with that, they give us a list of the bridges, and it's mostly tree work, and we do that in the winter. It's usually erosion repair. This is where we've cleaned the throat of the bridge out and removed some trees. Next slide, please. Same thing here on Brown Hill, south of Armstrong, but there's some drift in there, some silt that we removed. Next slide, please. One of the reasons that we do the bridge inspections is so these little trees don't grow into big trees and start pushing the abutment like they do on your sidewalk. They'll actually have the force required to move a bridge. Next slide, please. This is some, we've started our tree removal work, or vegetation control, as I like to call it. This is on Headville Road, north of Pleasant Hill. There used to be a whole line of cedar trees there that were a line-of-sight distance for Pleasant Hill. You couldn't see cars coming over that hill very well at that intersection, so that's a nice improvement there. And so our sign crew repaired or replaced 246 signs or posts. They're still working on the stop sign advance warning project. The countywide striping is complete. As, it was probably about the middle of November we finished that. Our motor graders maintained 1,731 miles of roadway. The mowing's complete, mower tractors are in the shop being ready to go back. They're rentals, we rent our mowing tractors. And I did just some yearly totals for the aggregates, just so you get an idea of the tonnage of materials that we go through. We hold 36,450 ton of rock, 11,370 ton of SS3, that's the three-quarter sized aggregate, 11,450 ton of AB3, 13,505 ton of sand, 9,500 ton of dirt, and 3,180 tons of crushed concrete. And that total is 85,455 ton. That's 5,697 truckloads, so that averages out to about 22 loads a day, just to get you an idea of how much we owe and just what our trucks do. And that equates to just a little bit over $1.7 million of budgeted funds.
Darren, the crushed concrete, where do we get that? Or do we crush our own? Or how, where's? I don't recall that being a part...
We purchased that from Lonnie Wilson earlier in the spring to put an edge wedge on State Street Road from...
Okay, I recall now.
...135 to Brookville.
Do we still have some of that left? Or we've used it all up?
We've used it all, yes. So our plans, we're continuing to do some culvert replacements as weather allows, but most of our focus will be on the rotational tree work through the rural territories this winter. And we're working on plans for next year's project list and getting equipment purchases out to bid. Our 2023 budget overall did not exceed its limits, so that was good news.
That's real good news. Well, I assume that everybody's out working hard, got going about, what, 5:00 in the morning?
We started about 4:00 this morning, just to get the motor graders out there and get the big chunks knocked off, and then the plow trucks come behind and salt.
Jim and I were talking just a little bit before the meeting regarding what the designations are. I mean, do the graders hit the paved roads, or is that the snow plow trucks? Or is there a pecking?
This particular event, the motor graders had to go out and make one pass on the asphalt roads. That takes about an hour, and then the plow trucks will follow, and then the motor graders go to their gravel roads. The paved roads are the priority, and then the motor graders go work, try to get a pass on, one pass on every gravel road, and then the trucks spend the rest of the day salting and knocking the slush off of the asphalt roads. Now with the blowing snow today, it might be that the motor graders have to come back and re-blade some of it because it gets too heavy for the trucks.
All right, well, that's interesting and answers our curiosity. Any other commissioner comments? If not, thank you for your efforts and your staff out there at the Road and Bridge Department that I know that you guys work pretty hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, we'll move to item number two.
Commissioners' comments?
Any comments from any commissioners? Item number three.
Announcements.
Mr. Chair, we did have one announcement today, which is that on Thursday, January 11th at 9:30, the Kansas Senate Assessment and Taxation Committee will be having a hearing on Senate Bill 196. And you may ask yourself why that is worthy of an announcement at the Saline County Commission meeting this morning. The reason is because that particular bill would restore local ad valorem tax reduction funds to cities and counties, and the League of Municipalities, the Kansas County Commissioners Association, and Kansas Association of Counties will be submitting testimony in support of that. They have also asked for kind of just a show of support, kind of pack the room. So if any commissioners are able to make the journey to Topeka on Thursday morning, I think that KAC and KCCA would appreciate our attendance. We don't intend to submit any written testimony. Those organizations in several additional counties have already submitted written testimony. We don't really feel like there's a lot we could add, but our presence would be noted. County Appraiser Sean Robertson is here as well. He sits on the KAC board and was on a webinar yesterday that talked a little bit about strategy for the hearing. He is unfortunately not able to go to Topeka on Thursday, and I am not as well, but if any commissioners are able to go, just wanted to make that announcement.
Well, it's a double-edged sword for me. Obviously, we all want our personal property taxes lowered. Whatever we can do to help them do that, the KAC and the County Commissioners Association to help lower property taxes would be greatly appreciated. On the other hand, Saline County right now is probably getting more money from the Kansas Legislature than any other county going in the city of Salana. I'm very reluctant to go down and poke the bear, so to speak, and tell them that we need more and we're unhappy with whatever they're doing. That's where I'm at with it, but again, if someone else can get that job taken care of and we still get our money from Topeka, I'd be happy. So that's my position, but if any other commissioner wants to go and furnish their support, they're welcome to do that.
I just want to ask, you'll hear, again, a lot of people don't understand or out there about what this all involves. I just want to know if County Appraiser Sean could give us a little idea of why and what this is all about? If you would, please.
Sean Robertson, County Appraiser, also I'm the Appraiser representative to the Kansas Association of Counties Board. So just a brief history and what all this is about. This existed, this local ad valorem tax reduction is basically the sending of excess sales tax funds from the state back to local entities so that the property tax collection at the local level doesn't need to be at such a high level. This is still in statute, but the last time it was actually funded was 2003. So there's, as our county administrator said, there's been a big push recently by a few legislators, KAC, Kansas League of Municipalities, and some boards of county commission to get this funded. You know, some of the proponents saying that sending that surplus sales tax back to local entities would reduce property taxes, but the opponents say, last time we funded it, that the locals didn't reduce property taxes the way it was intended. So that's kind of the two sides of the issue at this point.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go on to concept discussion. Item number one.
Planning and zoning board discussion.
Well, hello, Hannah. You must be going to be the one to discuss this.
I am going to try. Tim Hamilton, our planning and zoning administrator, was going to attempt to be on Zoom, but I don't think he's been able to connect just yet, so that's completely fine. So I will take on this discussion. So a couple weeks ago, the commission had expressed interest in having a little bit of a discussion about the makeup of the planning and zoning board that we have. So I thought I'd start off with a little bit of history, talk about our current board, and then as well as maybe what some other counties are doing, so absolutely feel free to pause me, and we can kind of just go on with this discussion. So for history, the planning and zoning board was first established back in July of 1952, and it was established as a five-member board. In the 70s, it changed from a five-member board to a seven-member board, and then in 93, the planning board extended from a seven-member board to a nine-member board. And the reason it was done that, as far as everything that we can read, was it was hopefully to increase citizen participation, especially in the rural parts of, rural parts of the county. So the last time that the county commission amended the resolution as far as the makeup of the planning commission board was back in 2006, and what was decided was they were having a difficult time keeping nine members on that board. So they modified the resolution to read no less than five, but no more than nine, with the majority of those appointed to the board having to live in the... with the majority of those appointed to the board having to live in the unincorporated areas of Saline County. So that's kind of, that's been the makeup. We've had a full roster of nine members for quite some time. We haven't had a difficult time with filling those positions. So that's been, I guess, helpful. The other change that this commission needs to be aware of was back in 2019, we did combine the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. And what that resolution did was named the rural or unincorporated representatives on the planning commission also as the Board of Zoning Appeals. So we have to have a minimum of five board members for the Board of Zoning Appeals. So as it sits, our current, our current planning commission, the terms are for three years. They start on April 1st and go till March 31st. So coming up here on March 31st, we have got four members of the planning commission that will be up for reappointment, two members up for reappointment in 2025, and three members up for reappointment in 2026. Our current board right now, we have got three representatives that live within the city limits of Salina and the remaining live out in the county. So we've got a really good representation between rural and city. So just to kind of give some information about what other counties are doing, both, or all three, Harvey, McPherson, and Ford County have nine member boards. Dickinson and Reno have seven member boards. Butler has a five member board. And that particular makeup, each of the five county commissioners appoints a board member, kind of like what we do for the Public Building Commission. Each of the county commission appoints a member to the Public Building Commission. But there's also maybe an opportunity to have a discussion about the concept of a metropolitan planning commission. The counties of Finney and Douglas have combined planning and zoning boards with, combined with Garden City, Holcomb, and Lawrence respectively. Gary County also, they used to have one, they just recently disbanded that, but they had one for quite some time. We have not had any discussions whatsoever with the city of Salina on that. So it's certainly a concept that's out there that does occur in other jurisdictions. And if that's something that the commission would like to explore a little bit more, we can certainly do that, too. So I also did pull information the last two years as far as attendance of the planning commission members to the planning commission board meetings that we have had. So both in the 2021 year and 2026 year, on average, we had six that continually showed up or were, that were present for planning commission meetings. So obviously, there's a lot of advantages when it comes to a nine member board as it relates to ensuring that we have a quorum. We've never had an issue of not having a quorum where we've had to cancel a planning commission meeting. The only times we've not had planning commission meetings is because we just haven't had anything on the particular agenda. So the other is just the current makeup of our board. We've been very intentional to ensure that a majority or more than a majority of our board is represented by the unincorporated areas. So there's, there's a lot of information that is kind of there, but certainly would like to know any questions or ideas or thoughts the commission has as it relates to this board and we'll try to answer.
I would like to know what the, what the role is of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Where do they play a role in all of this?
So the Board of Zoning Appeals is separate from the planning commission-ish.
Right.
They, so the planning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals will never hear the same case. They would never do that. The Board of Zoning Appeals is established as a board for anybody to appeal a decision of the zoning administrator, i.e. Tim. So if there's a particular area within the county that is zoned agriculture or zoned commercial and Tim makes a determination that they can or cannot do something within that particular zoned area, then a person could appeal.
So that isn't a board that, that if someone appeals the decision of the planning commission, that it goes to the Planning and Zoning Appeals Board, it doesn't work that way?
Correct, yes, yeah, sorry, I was, yeah, you're correct.
Okay, because that was going to lead me to another question that we probably don't want to hear.
Right.
Any other questions?
Well, you mentioned that some have incorporated into a metropolitan type deal. I am not a proponent of that. I'd, I'd like our, our people sitting on that board from the, from the rural area to be dealing with rural type issues and such, to have them have, I think you'd have a hard time getting rural people to come in, have to sit through a, a meeting that deals so much with what's happening inside the city of Salina. And I doubt if Salina would even be a proponent of it. So I definitely am not in favor of that. As far as the number, it sounds like we have the flexibility, no less than five, no more than nine. We're not mandated to, to have a certain number, just as long as we're within those parameters. But it does serve us well to have an odd number, correct?
Correct.
So I don't know if we want to tweak that or not and like to hear from others.
Well, my opinion.
Commissioner Shadwick here, and I think I was the one that kind of wanted to put this on the agenda, so I probably ought to say something. I more than anything just appreciate Hannah's information and history on this. And man, even though I've been on the board 10 years, sometimes I need to be reminded of things. It sounds, it sounds to me like I do like that flexibility. I thought that we had to have seven and we had to have nine. And if we can go down to five, that makes it work. And also, it sounds to me like we're not having any trouble. I had just heard so many times that we were having trouble filling spots. But you know, if we routinely have six people at the meetings, then maybe it is working. So I'm sorry if I interrupted anybody.
Well, I think the, the other important thing to know is that on a nine member board and only five show up, that means the, the majority of that five can make a ruling. I mean, if only three out of nine people, but nine were to the meeting, only, only five voted, the, the majority rules. That's, I think people get lost in that concept sometimes. And even in the latest, you know, situation that we had with the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think that was potentially going to play into it the way that some people thought, so. All right, anyone else?
One, one question. Excuse me, one, one second before I lose my train of thought. The majority of the board needs to be appointed from outside of, outside the city of Salina, correct?
Correct.
They can be from another incorporated Smolin or something like that. But so if you're down to five and three of them are, are Salina residents, then you're going against the, aren't you against the, the policy then?
No, so that's just the appointment. It's not who shows up and who votes.
No, I'm saying if, if you can have, our board will have between five and nine.
Correct, yes, yeah.
If, I think, if I can pick up what you're laying down, we do need five members for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And all of those, I think, need to be in the unincorporated. So you always need five in the unincorporated and five is a majority of nine. So it, it kind of doesn't matter that we have the majority in the unincorporated rule for the nine member board because you always need five in the unincorporated for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I wasn't aware of that, so. Five of them will always be unincorporated members.
Correct, yes, yes, with that change that we made combining the planning commission with the Board of Zoning Appeals. Yes, that is correct.
And Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Hay. Going back to what Commissioner Wees said earlier, I sat on the planning commission for the city of Salina for several years and I'm kind of like Commissioner Wees. I think, you know, I, I would really like to see us keep it the way we got it and not bring in and have people sit in some of those meetings. I've been through a few meetings that's been excruciating sometimes. So anyway, I think that, you know, what we got right now is working. And I think we should probably just, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you Hannah.
All right, thank you.
We will move to the reorganization, item number one.
Election of officers.
This is the time when, at the time of year when we reorganize the Saline County Board of Commissioners, we elect a new chairman, vice chairman, secretary. So I guess at this time I'll open up the floor for nominations for chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may start out, since I am vice chair at the time, and I hope I articulate this okay, and I hope the connection's fine. But you know, the vice chair normally becomes the chair. And as I'm looking at my schedule throughout the year, there's many times that I'm going to have to attend by Zoom. So it's always been my intention to nominate Commissioner Hay as chair and me as, as vice chair. And, and if I could just throw out a potential compromise, and if it's okay for Commissioner Hay, because I, I think you'd make a fantastic chair. But you know, I would be willing to, to become chair with Commissioner Hay as vice chair, understanding that I don't think you can chair meetings from Zoom. I just, that just doesn't work. I can't see the, the audience there and get the feel of the, of the room. So I would, you know, those days, maybe it'd be, I mean, if it'd be okay, then Commissioner Hay could, could chair the meetings those days. This would maybe help him, you know, become chair the next year. You know, I know that this is only his second year and maybe this is just a way to ease him into that, that role. So just, I'm throwing that out and I apologize that I'm not there. Probably work a lot better if I could just sit and look at you guys in the eyes and see, see what you're thinking. But let me at least just start with that.
So is that a nomination then of Mr., of Commissioner Hay for, for chairman?
Well, my, my intent would be that, that I would be, I would be willing to be chair if you guys made that motion. That's, I can't make a motion for me. If, if Commissioner Hay is agreeable to be the vice chair and then to, to serve in, you know, that role when I am on Zoom. I don't even know if that's appropriate and maybe the Philip can, can weigh in on that.
Well, we haven't, I, I don't remember that we've, maybe once that we've actually moved the, the vice chairman up to chairman. It was my intention to nominate Marty Shadwick as chairman, but he's, he's expressed his, his desire to, or not desire, but his potential that he couldn't serve the role properly in his opinion. We have, we have never nominated a slate of officers. So I do think that we need to, at least my opinion is that we need to vote on these positions one by one, unless someone else is opposes that. But I mean, I think I've heard a nomination for chairman from, for, for Mr. Hay. But what, I'm listening.
I don't know if I, if I heard that or not in.
Maybe I didn't hear that.
What Marty was saying, but I appreciate Commissioner Shadwick's forthright about the future. I think it's very important, very important that, that we have continuity, that we have a, a chair that, that we know will be here as, as much as possible. And, and I look at the chair, any, any of the five of us could do it. But I look at the chair as, as more than just doing it. It's a, it's a matter of being the ambassador for the county, to be involved with, interact well with the city, to be a good spokesman statewide for us, and to run a good and clean meeting. I applaud Chairman Vidrickson for the job he's done this past year. And with that being said, I will make a nomination that nominate Chairman, Commissioner Vidrickson for chair.
Well, there, there needs to be a second if that is the case. And we're, and if I don't hear one, then we'll reopen the, the nominations.
Mr. Chair, if that's the case, then I, I will also nominate Commissioner Hay to be the next chairman.
Okay, we, we need to act on the first one first. We'll just do it that way in support of Commissioner Wees. That I, I don't know whether I can legally second my, the nomination or not.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that nomination. Now we also have a nomination for Commissioner Hay to be the chairman. And is there a second for that?
Second that.
All right, so now we have, Commissioner Vidrickson has been moved and seconded for chairman along with Commissioner Hay has also been moved and seconded for chairman. Kind of a unique situation that we have here. I, I don't know what to say from my perspective. I mean, I've been the chairman for four years. Maybe it's time for someone else to do it. I appreciate the, the kind words from Commissioner Wees, but maybe I'll just let the rest of the commission decide what we're going to do here, so.
And you have done a great job, very, very.
I guess we'll, we'll take the vote. I don't know where else to turn to. But all of those in favor of Commissioner Vidrickson being the chairman, please say aye.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Shadwick stuteely has said in the past that he knows how to count to three. But I will say aye here. I confused you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, what I'm really trying to avoid is a, is a division of the, of the, of the commission. And it, I will also say.
I agree, I agree Commissioner, and that is an awkward situation. And I apologize for even maybe starting the conversation at the beginning. May, may I just propose a roll call vote of who you wanted and so, you know, because I, I would never want to vote against you. You have just been an outstanding chair for four years. But I do think it's time for somebody new and, and I think Joe would be able to be there all the time. And you know, that's why I am supporting him. I'm not in any way not supporting you. And then that, that puts all of us in an uncomfortable position. But you know, maybe just a roll call vote of Vidrickson or Hay would, would make it a little easier just because I can't vote against you, just can't do that.
Well, that makes it even more confusing for me, Marty, because I mean, I've been nominated and if you can't vote against me, then that means you're going to vote, which is fine. I don't, that's, it's not a popularity contest. We're just in a unique situation here.
Around and you said Commissioner Wees, who do you vote for? He would say Vidrickson. If you voted Commissioner Shadwick, who would you vote for? I would say, hey, that's my point, that's a roll call vote.
All right, we'll do it that way. And I would ask that the clerk would call the. And I would ask that the clerk would call the roll in alphabetical order, probably is normally the way that they do these things, I think. So you can start with.
Commissioner Hay.
For, yeah, and then you're, you're suggesting then, Mahdi, that they, they say which one, which name?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Hay.
Okay, then, Mahdi Shadwick, Commissioner Shadwick.
Commissioner Hay.
And then Commissioner Sparks.
Commissioner Hay.
And there's no sense in going any further.
Well, I'll just, I'll just finish it out for the minutes. How about that? Commissioner Wees.
To touch on, to touch on what the chair and Commissioner Shadwick said to show unity and, and moving forward, I will vote for Commissioner Hay.
Hey, Commissioner Vidriksen.
That's fine with me then. Mr. Hay.
Okay.
And we'll now move to the vice chairman, and I will nominate Commissioner Roger Sparks for vice chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Is there anyone else? Any other nominations? I will ask that all of those in favor of Roger Sparks being the vice chairman, please say aye.
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 And those opposed, motion carries. Roger is the new vice chairman. And I will open up nominations for secretary.
I nominate Mahdi Shadwick.
Second to motion.
Any other nominations? All of those in favor of Mahdi Shadwick being the secretary for the coming year, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Mahdi is the new secretary. All right, it looks like next week's agenda is the county engineer update and right now, and senior services update, along with county commission board assignments. I will take a motion for adjournment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just, I just wanted to note, that's actually two weeks from today, and next week will be a study session, so just wanted to make that note.
Next week is a study session, and where is it?
It will be in room 107B.
And regarding?
We'll be talking about software.
Very good. Okay, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved.
Is there a second? Moving second at the way adjourned today's meeting, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.